On a lot of us right now, we thought it would be the really perfect time to share some Zen with our community. So we've brought in the big guns for today's session and teamed up with world renowned hypnotherapist and mindfulness wellbeing expert Terrence the Teacher. So Terrence is the go to meditation guru for top wellness brands, for exhausted influencers, and a large number of celebrities. So he's here today to talk us through how we can deal with the sense of loss of control in our lives during this time. So Terrence is going to guide us through a meditative breathwork session before answering your questions live. So be sure to submit any questions that you might have during, we'll be monitoring them throughout, and we'll get to them at the end of the session. Terrence, welcome.
Hi, how are you?
Very good. How are you doing?
I'm good. I'm just checking. Can you see me properly? Do you think I need some more light?
Um, I think you're, you might be okay.
Okay.
Okay for me. Hopefully you're okay for everyone else.
Yeah, yeah. Great.
So Terrence, we are so happy to have you here. And as I, as I mentioned just now, like you are so well known within this industry. We're so grateful to have you here and just really talk to us about, you know, how we can deal and our community at Ellie Miami can deal with this sense of loss of control. I know that this is something you've been working on a lot at the moment. And so, yeah, I'll pass it over to you and yeah, really looking forward to seeing what's next.
Okay, thank you so much. Hi, everyone. So yes, so as you now know, I'm Terrence the Teacher. I really feel privileged to be here and to basically share with you guys my passion. Now, my background, as Steph has said, is I come from a clinical hypnotherapy background. I also studied neuro-linguistics. Before that, I was actually a personal trainer and a pilates teacher. So I first worked with the body, then I got into the mind. And then now I'm into mindfulness and meditation. I started to become a mindfulness coach over the last five years. And mindfulness has really changed my life, obviously on a personal level. But I've also realised what a powerful hands-on tool it is to deal with our life day to day. And in the last few weeks, we have all gone through something quite extraordinary. I don't think this is something that we could have dreamt of or even thought of. I was saying to a friend of mine the other day, this is like a movie that we're living in in the moment. It's like one of those, you know, disaster movies that I would, you know, hire Netflix or something. And we've, you know, we've not, we were not prepared for this. And what we have to do now is we have to go, how do we get through this? How can we as strong as possible, as healthy as possible, day to day, get to the end of our day, so that we again ready to have a good night's sleep and start with the rest of our day? Because what's happened here is we've lost control. And what's quite funny, something that's very important to the mind, especially the subconscious mind, is this belief or feeling of control. Because our mind learns through habits or repetition of habit. So it learns that I get up in the morning at the same place at the same time, I do the same thing, then I have my coffee, then I have my whatever. I go out of the house, run to work, do my thing, go to the pub, go home, have my dinner, whatever it is. And our bodies really get used to it. What's happened now is the rug has been pulled out from under us. And none of us have that routine anymore. None of us have that control. And what it creates is the brain goes, I need to fix this. I need to help this person. And the way that it will do it, it will try and make you move through creating cortisol levels to rise, adrenaline, fear, sadness. All these feelings that most people are feeling now that's going through you is just your body saying, please correct this. Please correct this situation for you, you know, because this doesn't feel comfortable. But we know that we can't change this. But what you can do is you can take control. You can create a little form of control by creating a habit and making choices in your day that will eventually establish that feeling back to your subconscious mind that you are back in control. So what I always say to people, there's three things that you need to look at. Step one is in the morning, take control of your day. Now, how do we take control of our day? Let's first think how our day takes control of us. Oh, I wake up, oh, there's my phone. Oh, whose text, whose message, what post are they? Oh, let's watch the news. And before you know it, your cortisol levels are through the roof. That's not you taking control. Then you allow your cortisol levels even to raise more and fear takes over. And then you know what type of day you're gonna have. So in the morning, the way that we take control is decide to bring down your stress levels or the cortisol levels, because they are naturally high to help you to move. Bring them down. Do a morning meditation or create a morning routine that calms you down. Now, I don't care if it is putting on your makeup, putting on your favourite clothing, having a nice shower, have a cup of tea, whatever it is that just nurtures you. But you make that decision. And you make those choices step by step as you wake up in the morning. Because you are back in control and the subconscious will get that feeling, ah, every morning, this is what Terrence does, or this is what Steph does. And as you do it, there will be a calm that will come out of you. Because you're taking the control back. Then we get further into the day. Now, what happens during the day, you can't help it. There's news, there's messages, there's family, there's things that's happening. You can't get to work because you are now furloughed, whatever's happening. So your stress levels will rise again. And you'll feel out of control. So the next step is reset yourself. Continuously reset yourself. How do I reset myself? Calm myself down, get back in control. One of the most powerful things is, is to meditate or to do a breathing meditation. Because again, your stress levels go up, it's all hormonal, but you can bring them down. And I always say it's about balance, because of course there has to be a bit of stress. But if the one side goes up and the other one goes down, you're gonna feel out of balance. And if you can just maintain a nice balanced amount of both, you can have a much better day. So the resetting yourself during the day is so important. Now, how do we reset ourselves? One of the things is our thoughts take over, and you guys know this. All the worries, all the things, you watch the news, you see Instagram, there's these things in your day to day life that's happening. And one of the most powerful things is just to check in with your breathing. And I'm actually right now actually gonna ask you, I'm gonna take you guys through a little exercise just to show you how powerful it is to check into your breath and just to notice the difference. Notice how you feel now and once we are done. So what I want you to do, if you can, and if you are safe, just close your eyes. And when you close your eyes, what I want you to do for me is just to start noticing your breathing. Just basically check in with your breath. Now, as you notice your breath, you can actually ask yourself and just answer yourself in your mind. Is my breath fast or slow? Just notice. And then ask yourself, is my breath deep or shallow? And again, just notice for yourself, is my breath deep or shallow? And then there's another interesting question to notice. Ask yourself, where in your body do you notice yourself in this moment breathing the most? When you breathe in, do you feel it the most in your stomach? Maybe your chest? Maybe your mouth, if you breathe through your mouth, maybe the nostrils? Just notice where you notice your breath the most. And then what you can do is just go back to your breathing, notice your breath going in and out. Breathing in and breathing out. Then at your own time, at your own pace, can slowly open your eyes. Now, I can't ask everyone, but if you wanna send me messages of how you're feeling, or even if you have questions after this. But mostly you will feel a bit more calm, a bit more relaxed. Maybe all those thoughts and that just for a second or two have just been stopped or intercepted. And that's what you wanna do is you just wanna take a little bit of that control back, reset yourself. And if you feel a little bit better, then obviously you can go back to your day. But this is something that you can do continuously during your day. And there's a lot of different breathing exercises. I mean, I'm sure at some point we maybe can put a document out and teach a few of the other breathing exercises for the Ellie Miami, you know, group of people, but you can really help yourself to have a better day and get to the end of your day. Now, as I said, you know, in the morning you take the control. And then during the day, you reset yourself and balance yourself. But then the last most important point for me is at night time, learn to switch off. Because you know, I work with sleep and insomnia and hypnosis. And what's quite ironic is people go to bed after they've gone out clubbing, drinking, eating, working, watching the late night news to see how many more people, you know, sick, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And then they jump into bed and they go, sleep.
Yeah.
So what's gonna happen? You know, you've got to get your body prepared for sleep. As the sun goes down, our melatonin level goes up, serotonin is supposed to go down. If you have blue light or, you know, the TV, the phone, laptop in, what you're actually doing is you're decreasing melatonin and you're increasing serotonin. So you're actually doing the opposite of what needs to be done. So at night time, every night from now on, just say to yourself, I'm going to learn to switch off. I'm gonna prepare my body for rest, for sleep. And what's quite amazing, the subconscious will learn from your habits that this is when I'm getting ready for sleep. So for instance, you know, start dimming the lights. You know, put half of the lights on that you usually have on, the closer you get to bedtime. Definitely have a time where the phone and all that gets switched off at least an hour, two hours before bedtime. Keep them away from the area that you sleep. So that that area is for sleep only. But again, you make the decision to start switching off. You know, when you, maybe you have a nice meal with someone, eat slowly, chat to the person, be focused on the people that you're with, if you are with someone. If you wash the dishes, wash it slowly as you brush your teeth. Just do it nice and slow. Because that then will slow down all those other processes in the body and it will get you ready for sleep. And then when you get to bed, it's very easy, you already feel ready. If you then wanna do another form of meditation, breathing, whatever your preferred meditation is, you can do that. And just again, obviously help yourself even to have a better night's rest.
Yeah.
But by creating those steps every day, you start by taking control and you implement four, five, six things that you choose to do. It's gonna bring back that feeling of control, yeah? Then during the day, you're gonna reset yourself. Now, you know, one of the big things that we have is this uncertainty with this loss of control. And uncertainty is what's gonna happen? What's the news gonna tell me? And that just upsets you, stresses you, creates more fear. When that happens, just reset yourself, come to the moment. Because the only thing that is actually really certain is this moment, right here, right now. We don't know what tomorrow holds or what it will bring. We don't even know what next week brings. But right here, right now, you know, you can look after yourself. And that's a certainty you have, that you can help yourself. And then the last one, after you've kept on resetting yourself, if you've never meditated, try and bring in a meditation practice, once a day, 10 minutes. Some people can do an hour. Again, that has to be a process, but it can be a walk. It can be a nice long run if you can get out. It can be reading a book, you know, a slow meal. There's so much that you can do just to reset yourself. And then at the night time, and you can decide on what time, you know, when does night time start for you? You start creating processes that your subconscious know you are switching off. And I can guarantee you will find you will have a better night's rest. And that's more or less my three top tips around this in this time that we're going through. And just to add before I finish, this is something you can do after this has gone over as well. You know, after this isolation, et cetera. If you every day just take control of your life in a little bit of a different way, making a few different choices, maybe healthier choices. You will find that, you know, you will perceive and you experience life in a different way.
Yeah, you were saying as well, Terrence, I know from, sort of first connected last year, that even if you, you know, like you're saying, experienced people who meditate can go on for an hour. And I think it's really key, it's like people who haven't meditated or are not used to meditating. How can they, because I know you were talking a lot about the sort of physiological implications of actually just doing a minute or five minutes. And how would you sort of suggest, I mean, especially when we go back to the office, I think right now people have more time to give to it. And some certainly do anyway. If you've got kids, maybe not. Maybe we need to teach the kids how to meditate as well. But what would you, what would you suggest?
The simplest way I can explain this is mindfulness definition says focusing in on one thing, on purpose, in the present moment. That's a meditation. What do they do in meditation? They use a mantra, they use a gong, they use a sound. So that's focusing in on one thing in on purpose. You can do it with your breath, focusing on your breathing. What this does physiologically, when we operate now, like when we're talking, we are mostly in beta waves, which is where most of our stress sits. If you meditate or if you focus in on one thing, like if you go to a concert, if you watch a good movie, read a good book, have a good meal, you bring yourself to alpha and that's where the brain and the body repairs itself. This is where you calm down, this is where you can help yourself. And that's the science. And you know, so for me, it's about anything that you can do where you focus in on purpose in the present moment. And you'll find this, you know, sit at your desk, walk away, go make a cup of tea and just spend two minutes. And all you think about is making the cup of tea. Boil the water, listen to the water, pour the water. You know, stir the cup of tea and you'll find it will calm you down. And then as far as meditation goes, use that same rule. Just understand it's about focusing in on one thing, on purpose. Start one minute. Start with your breath, breathing in, breathing out. As you breathe in, say breathing in. And as you breathe, say breathing out. Do it for a minute. That's a, your breath can be your mantra. And then as you get used to it, you can do two minutes and then you can increase five minutes. By now, it can go up to an hour, two hours sometimes, but it's a personal journey. But once you start feeling the benefits, I think it will steer you towards that habit.
Yeah. You made a comment earlier about also trying to get a good night's sleep and shutting off and not looking at your phone, because like you say, with the blue lights, it really affects it. And for those, again, I think who, who really struggle, and I think a lot of probably our crowd do, they really struggle to, to shut off at night time. And I think, speaking from personal experience, I know I use my phone sometimes to try and help me to just focus on something on my phone. So my brain stops thinking about everything else that's been collating over the day. How, how can people sort of use that time to make sure they do have a good night's sleep without, without being in front of screens? And but also being able to not focus on that for months?
Well, the thing is, is that you first of all have to take, you have to make the decision. Do I think I need sleep? Do I think I need good sleep? Do I need a good night's rest? And the science tells us we need sleep and we need deep sleep. You don't need a lot of sleep, but you need a good night's rest. And if you're too, if you're too stimulated, I'm sorry, it's gonna be very hard for you to get into that sleep. Your thoughts are only firing and wiring the way they do because you have basically ramped them up. With watching your mobile phone, doing your work, I promise you, if you start switching off an hour to two hours before bedtime, by the time you get to bed, you will find it will feel as if there's longer gaps in between your thoughts. Because you've started slowing down, melatonin has gone up and the melatonin will help the brain and the body to switch off. But if you're countering it with your phone and your work, you're gonna have a problem.
Yeah.
I've got an answer for you.
Yeah, absolutely. And I think, so when you talk about like conscious, the conscious breathing, I think that's a really important thing that, that's helped me is if you try and bring, if I try and bring my thought process into just breathing, I think that definitely, definitely helps me. So maybe that will help again, others, so again, with overactive brains.
Yeah, and I mean, there's a, there's another meditation that you can do if you really feel that your thoughts are really going well. Because it's about interrupting them and just interrupting that thought process so it eventually calms down. There's a very well-known meditation called the Seven Eleven. And they actually use it with people that have panic attacks and anxiety attacks. Because when someone has a panic attack, they will immediately start thinking, oh, I'm dying, oh my God, what should I do, blah, blah, blah. So there's a lot of these things going on. So with the Seven Eleven, what you say to the person is, as you breathe in, count up to seven. And then as you breathe out, you have to count out for 11 counts. And obviously you do it for a bit, so you do it for two minutes, five minutes. Now, if you're counting for seven as you breathe in and counting for 11, it's very difficult for other thoughts to get through. Yeah? So that's one way of getting the brain to sort of focus in on one thing on purpose in the present moment. And then the side effect would be you will calm down, relax. They've also found that the reason why you breathe out for a longer breath out is because it immediately engages with the parasympathetic nervous system, which attaches to all the central nervous systems in your body, so it will calm down the body as well.
Yeah.
So it's a two-pronged attack. It interrupts, but it also calms down the body.
Yeah.
And just, yeah, I mean, I just wanna say to everyone that is watching, please, if you have questions while we are chatting, please send us a question. I love answering questions if there's anything I can help with.
If not, then, you know, if anyone's too, feeling too shy or anything like that, follow, you can, you can contact Terrence directly, of course, and ask her.
Yeah, DM me or anything, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely.
Did you have anything else that you wanna ask there?
Yeah, I do, actually. I mean, I think as well, I always come back to, you know, our, our crowd, sorry about the sirens outside. I'm in central London, everyone, just in case. And but I think, yeah, like on that note, we've got a crowd that's, you know, really, really global. And I think people are coming in from, from all over the world. You've got America, you've got the UK, you've got people from in Africa and Asia. And I think we're probably all at different phases throughout the lockdown period, but we're all pretty much there together. What's sort of the one bit of advice I think from, that you would give to everyone just now while, while we're in this, in this period to just be like, okay, if you could just do this one thing every single day, just to help you through the next few weeks or months, or, you know, none of us know how long really this will go on to, we all have, we all have that hope and we're always, like you say, listening to the news. But, you know, what, what are you, what do you, what are you doing, I suppose? You know, you're in this with us as well. And, you know, what's, what's the one thing that you would be doing every day that you would say would work for everyone else?
You know, I would love to say there's a one shoe fits all, but you know, working with the type of clients, hotels, in fashion, even movie industry, we know different movies for different people, different tastes, you know, towels, different taste in clothing. But one thing that I think, and I was thinking about it this morning, is I always say that's almost like it's the triple A's that I talk about, which is awareness. It's just to become a little bit more aware of yourself from moment to moment, what you do, the way you talk to someone, the way you react, the things that you do. Why do you eat the food that you eat? Why do you drink this? Why do you have that seventh glass of wine? You know, just a little bit of awareness at the moment, because we have time actually at the moment in a strange way. And then the next A for me is attention. Just pay a bit of attention. Pay attention to yourself. Nurture the self, look after the self. Because you deserve to look after yourself. Pay attention to the people around you, even the ones that's not with you. Phone or contact one person that you think that's lonely or that might appreciate the call. So paying attention a bit more, because again, in this time we have more time. And then the last thing, and it's a, it's a tool that mindfulness actually does teach you, is acceptance of things as they are. Because trying to fight this, trying to say, no, this shouldn't be, and like, I can't wait till I get to the end of this and accept where you are.
Yeah.
You know, really accept that decision that this is as it is, this is my reality. Thank you. I take it on and I will just change and work on the things that I can. Because you know, when we grieve, when we have lost, one of the steps actually in grief is acceptance.
Yeah.
Of that process. And I think that's the third A for me is, guys, let's accept this, this has happened. This is a new world. So let's grab it, let's make the most of it. And I think we can create something extraordinary out of this. People in the hotel world, you know, people in the service industry, even people that do what I do, we can really change the world.
Yeah.
There is a question there very well.
Yeah, just from Jason here. So do you suggest essential oils in tandem with meditation before bed, before sleep? And do you have any recommendations?
I definitely would. I actually, you know, was, I would say spokesperson or brand ambassador for aromatherapy associates in the UK at one point. I also worked with the Rockefort Group and Irene Forte, Irene Forte skincare brands. So I know about all these extras that are out there and with essential oils, they calm you down, you make a connection to the smell. There's certain oils that really actually, if you put it on your pillow, I know really aids very good sleep. So yes, Jason, definitely. But I would say that's for people that don't have allergies to oils or anything like that. So again, it depends on the person. But there's quite a few good brands out there. I think that, you know, and they know what they're doing. People just should do their research and obviously just make sure that you don't have any you know, allergies and stuff, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. And I really loved what you said about, you know, you just have to accept it. And accept the feeling as well, see the situation, everyone's trying to accept all the time, but.
Yeah, if you're scared, be scared, just admit it. You know, that's actually mindfulness work when you deal with your thoughts. A thought come in, just, it's like a cloud. I'm scared and just watch it. I'm scared. Pleasure, Jason. Sorry. I can't speak and say thank you, Jason. So there's the, so there's the cloud and it's a thought and you watch it and it goes. You know, accept things as they are, accept your fear, right now I'm scared, okay, I'm scared.
Yeah.
And if you just sit with it, eventually it will lose its power. It's quite amazing. You know, when mindfulness, when mindfulness actually was created or the modern mindfulness in 1970s, they worked with people, cancer patients in a cancer hospital, John Kabat-Zinn did it. And he was, you know, they were working with patients that were terminal. So they taught them this body scan where you go through your body and just notice on the body parts as you go. And you go, there's my feet, how's it feeling? Yeah, this foot is sore. But you just move on, you don't give it more, you don't give it more energy, just accept it as it is. And in that acceptance, they found that people were less stressed, less anxious. They even found that by sitting with even those body parts that were in pain, by just accepting it, they found that the pain levels dropped. So there was a reduction in the pain.
Yeah.
So it's a very powerful tool to have, but obviously I think it takes time and you need to really make it part of, you know, your process.
Yeah, yeah, totally agree. There's got another question here. So is there a certain time of day or night that you find meditation to be the most impactful?
So I would, yeah, it's interesting. If I look at people that I've taught and people that I've worked with and listened to feedback, the morning meditations, directly when you wake up, because you immediately bring your cortisol levels down, you immediately relax. And then you just set yourself up for a better day. But not a lot of people can do a meditation in the morning because they have to get out, they've gotta get to work. So then I would say the next So then I would say the next one would be during the day when it suits you. But from feedback, I've heard the morning meditation, there's one that I teach called the gratitude process in the morning. And it's just about, I don't know, I don't, I don't know how much time we have left, but it's just directing your thoughts towards things in your life that you are grateful for or people or experiences. And what's extraordinary is that if you think about it, no matter even in the worst situation, even like I was in hospital five years ago with two cardiac arrests. Yeah, they didn't know if I was gonna survive, et cetera. But I was lying in bed and I was grateful for the people that saved my life. So that gratitude is an amazing word, because I never understood why people say, oh, be grateful, be grateful. It actually annoyed me, but when I started thinking about it is that if I think about gratitude or gratefulness, there's always something and it just sort of changes your, your, you know, your hormone level again, relaxes you a little bit more, you feel a little bit better. So in the morning, I often say, let's do the gratitude meditation. We start by checking in, not breathing. And then before we move on, we think of one thing that we're grateful for, one person. And then we go in our day and people just feel so much stronger and so much better. I hope that answered it.
Yeah, totally, totally agree.
It doesn't detract from meditating in the middle of the day. I've got a lot of people that have insomnia that use it at night. So we're, what, it has to fit into your lifestyle, very important, otherwise we won't do it.
Yeah, absolutely. Thanks so much, Terrence. And I think, you know, I think everyone around the world and wherever that they're looking from or, you know, I think everyone can take something away from it and I think everyone's got, needs to take that time to, to just breathe and, and be conscious of their surroundings and what's happening and their feelings around that. So, you know, hopefully that's helped everyone just a little bit as well. And even a couple of people just take something away from this as always. And we really hope that you've enjoyed it, guys, so feel a little bit calmer, a little bit more balanced. And now we can all just sort of breathe together, we've taken some time to do that, and all go off and do it ourselves. And in the meantime, obviously from, from us here at Ellie, we'll be continuing with more Ellie digital content in different forms in the coming weeks. So just stay tuned to our Instagram and our feed for updates and what's up next. Terrence, thanks again. You are fantastic as always. And if anyone again does have any questions or sort of follow-ups or comments, please contact Terrence, contact myself or my team. And we'll see you very soon.
Thank you for all the thank yous. Thank you for all the thank yous.
I'm always thanking you. Thanks so much. One more time. Bye, everyone. Take care.